Presented to the House and Senate next week for a vote. So all that looks to be in order. And Senator Timolty did have a conversation with the Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee about local aid and Chapter 70. And it sounds like we should hear something next week about both of those, which are obviously very important toward what we have in our budget for this fiscal year. So those were the only two updates that he shared with me. And we will also share those with the full committee on Monday night. So if there are no questions, Dr. Hackett, go ahead and give us an update on the school reopening plan.
Well, first of all, that's great news that it's the first time we've really had kind of what we think is a solid timeline for when we're going to know what funding looks like for next year. As you know, it's a little tough to plan, given everything that we're trying to plan without even knowing really for sure what our funding is going to look like. So it's good to hear that there is some kind of a timeline in mind for finding out something.
Yeah, that's great.
I do just want to say that Mr. Devon is here with me. So he's going to be coming in on my mic, just in case you see me talking and it doesn't sound like me, it'll be Mr. Devon.
That's if he lets me.
So we, as you know, I mean, tonight really wanted to focus primarily on, almost kind of exclusively on the school reopening plan or planning. As you know, we have brought together about 60 people with a broad-based representation from teachers, staff, administrators, parents to be part of this process. Primarily, they're starting with the steering committee that's at the district level that essentially oversees four working teams. One in finance and operations, one in health and safety, one in teaching and learning, and one in student special education services and student services. So all of the working teams have been meeting pretty regularly. We've been doing the best we can to take our planning efforts as far as we can without really having final guidance from the Department of Education. We did just to update you, and I'll do the same on Monday night, but the Commissioner did have a conference call with Superintendent Jim and I both listening in on that. There's been a fairly significant shift, I would say, in the approach that the Commissioner and the Department of Ed are taking. And I do think it's primarily because they've had a lot, they've gotten a lot of feedback about some of the initial guidance. And just to recap, we started in June with some recommendations to plan on six feet of physical distancing between students and staff within our classrooms and school. That then got narrowed to three feet. And at that point, that's when there was quite a bit of feedback coming in. And now there's not really a clear, really clear guidance on three versus six, but it was really pretty clear on the conference call that there's recognition at the Department of Ed that it really is a local decision, which is how we've talked about it and what we've known. So, you know, in the end, you know that the school committee is the governing body of the Branchary Public Schools and in the end is the group that will approve whatever plan it is that we decide to go with. So it was good news in the sense that we don't have to continue to scratch our heads about when is the next piece of guidance coming out. There was some initial guidance that came out on transportation. Their guidance to us, and we need to decide whether it matches with what we believe is the right thing to do, or right for us, I should say, is that we would be putting one student in each bench seat. So, and then we would stagger them. So if you can imagine getting onto a bus and you see the row of seats on the right and the row of seats on the left and the aisle down the middle. If you looked at the right-hand side, a student, one student would be in that bench seat. They would be up against the window. And the first bench on the left-hand side of the aisle, that student would be on the aisle side, both and all wearing masks and windows down. So that did not, most of that did not come as a surprise. We had actually kind of came up with that as a planning scenario about a week and a half, two weeks ago, and have been running what that would do for us and what it would look like. We estimate that we would be around 25 students able to ride the bus at that time. And the way we're thinking about it right now, we're running a scenario to see how many buses would it take to bring all the students who would be attending a school to the school? So for example, if we just assumed, if we just assumed K through five, for example, at Highlands, or just take our Highlands population from last year and our bus routes, it would take us about, assuming the same ridership, it would take us about 10 buses to bring all students to school and bring them at the same time. So that's helpful to know. We're actually going to run through the scenarios, set up the routes for it, and just really so we have a better idea of what it would take. That could have an effect on start time for schools if we had to shift, but we're not ready, we don't really have enough data on that to know exactly what the impact will be. That planning scenario also makes some assumptions about not transporting students who live within two miles of the school, which we currently do, even though it's not required by law. It also makes an assumption that we would not be providing transportation for grades seven through 12, which is also not required by law. But having said that, I think we all know and appreciate that we want to do as much as we can with transportation, particularly when we think about our middle schools, to be able to get, to use the Transportation Department to get students to the middle school. We also know that there may be a drop in ridership. We're going to do some surveying next week, and that will have an impact on our routes as well. So those were really the kind of the major developments or communications from the Commissioner on, I believe it was Wednesday now, yesterday? Yep, it was. And Jim, I don't know if I missed anything, you want to add anything to that?
No, I think the biggest piece of information really was around bus transportation. You know, most of the other things are just follow-up on earlier guidance. So it's with that information that we can begin to take the next steps in terms of developing the plan.
So in terms of our planning efforts, in our current and best thinking right now is we have prioritized getting, making sure that all of our special education program students and any students who have high level of need service, a service with high level of need are in school every day. So that is one of our goals. The other goal is to get students who are in pre-K through some grade level, as high as we can go, into school every day as well. We continue to work through various scenarios with that. Right now, it's, we need to still check some data. We've measured out every single classroom in every school. We know what our capacity numbers look like at six feet physical distancing. And essentially, you know, we do obviously lose a lot of seating capacity in each school when we're spacing chairs and desks six feet apart. We will need to take out quite a bit of furniture, freestanding bookcases, everything else that we can get out of the room that isn't required to provide instruction. But, you know, we are feeling better all the time about our ability to deliver on those two goals. Really, the question with those two goals is, one, how high in grade levels can we get for every day? And two, you know, how will parents and then you as the school committee react to and give us feedback and input on the way in which we would need to do it? So there would definitely need to be some movement of students in order to loosen up certain schools and take advantage of space that would be existing in other schools. Our hope is that we will be able to have a really better handle on that by Monday of this week, of next week. And we would then plan to do some communicating with staff and working with staff on Monday, and then bring some options and at least some draft options to the school committee meeting on Wednesday, I mean, on Monday night. So we will certainly be able to meet the 7:31, July 31 timeframe by the department for delivering a preliminary plan. We've looked through the requirements for what we need to provide for that, and it's really basically just asking the question conceptually, where are you leaning to and why? We have gone through, and we have certainly proven that we cannot do, we can't do every student every day with a six-foot physical distancing, pre-K through 12. We do not have the space to do it. Our pressure points, as not surprisingly, are Highlands, Liberty, and South. We know that because we have a building project on a ballot for September. So those three schools in particular, we really are difficult to maximize our spaces for all students for a everyday return. So what we also know is that we are, we do have some additional space at East Middle School, as we know. That space as well is obviously brand new, and we need to take advantage of some of that with some potential shifting. And we also want to talk to you this evening, right now, but we did a walkthrough of St. Francis, which, as you know, has closed to students for the next school year. We are very interested in having a conversation with you about leasing that space for the next school year at minimum to provide some swing space and to allow us to relieve some pressure, but even potentially to schedule it for a full grade level or a part of the grade level for actual programming. So we can talk about that in a little bit. And we would be looking at, whatever grade level we can't get in every day, we would be looking to go to a hybrid model. We certainly know we would be, we would have to go to a hybrid model for grades seven through 12. We have a few options on how to look at a hybrid model. One of, it could be one week on, one week off, or one week remote. It could be every other day. So a group of students comes in on Monday, and then the other half of students come in on Tuesday. And it could also be a two-by-two. So students come in one day, but they actually come in two days for in-person learning, and then one day that week is off for everybody for remote learning. So in essence, you have three days of remote in that model. So we've talked about how long each day would be. One of the things that certainly would be a lot easier is if we could, not just easier, but safer, we believe, if we could avoid having to serve lunch in either the classroom or the cafeteria. The cafeteria, for obvious reasons, six-foot physical distancing, you know, kids, a lot more kids in that space, and just, you know, kids with their masks off trying to eat. There are some potential divider solutions if we needed to go in that direction that would provide more protection for students. But if we can do it, what we, how we're kind of thinking about it is almost having the cafeteria or the kitchen kind of open the entire day. And we've already purchased some rolling carts through Food Services, Sarah Coughlin, in actually providing snacks at various points of the day, and then shortening the day for an earlier release of all students to be able to get them home. And then when we send them home, to send them home with a bag lunch, much like we're doing now with Grab and Go program. That's one option. We will continue to work through what would it look like if we were full serving, lunch, breakfast. You know, one of the things that we're very concerned about, and I think the teachers share this concern, is the idea that kids are going to eat in the classroom. First of all, we want our custodial staff cleaning all day long. We want them hitting bathrooms and high-touch areas all day long. You know, the idea of food in a classroom can create other issues, as we know, and we want to try to avoid that if we can. So that's kind of right now where we are overall in a kind of high level conceptually. Jim, if you, do we want to add anything to that at all?
Well, what I would add would be the work of the subcommittees around teaching and learning, who are at the same time looking at how individual schedules might be able to make some of these models work, so that regardless of what ultimately we open with, that we have a schedule that would make sense by level to be able to deliver, you know, the best curriculum that we can, both in person and remotely. And also, along with that, the ability to move seamlessly between in-person learning and remote, should circumstances with the virus dictate that down the road.
Which is, but seamless transition is a little easier until you get to the high school, and then it becomes more complicated. And Jim, just want to hit a couple of points with that.
Well, the big thing at the high school is that unlike other levels, we really do need to maintain the program of studies. It has implications in terms of individual students' ability to get into certain schools, NCAA clearinghouse, there are a number of factors at the high school that don't exist at the lower level. So by maintaining that schedule, what conceivably we'll have is kids who are in a course that goes remote with other courses that stay in person. And part of the question would be, what do we do with them while they're in school with, in essence, no class to go to? And so we'll look at scenarios where we'll have large meeting spaces where they can be socially distanced and do their work remotely, and then be able to go to their next in-person class. You know, we've been talking with teachers on that particular committee about what that work could look like and who might be involved in creating that work, should an individual teacher get truly ill and unable to continue. But the big piece at the high school is trying our utmost to maintain the overall program of studies, so that our kids are not disadvantaged in the college application process.
We're also trying to, just quickly on PPE, we currently have already, or will have received fairly soon, over 30,000 masks. We have all of the cleaning solutions that are effective against COVID-19. We have purchased several, well, over 10 backpack sprayers for those. When I mentioned, for example, with our transportation, when we drop off one group of students, we're going to have to spray those bus seats down prior to picking up the next group if we have to go out more than one time. So there will need to be, you know, cleaning done of the buses at the end of every single route. We've talked a little bit about how we can accomplish that. We are also developing, or have developed and will continue to work on cleaning protocols. And as part of that, we will be managing, making sure that what's supposed to be cleaned, when it's supposed to be cleaned, is getting done by logging it, so that we can produce at the end of a day or any point in the day, actual by-building logs as to when the, certainly bathrooms and high-touch areas were cleaned as well. We're trying to limit movement of students. I don't love the idea of keeping kids in one classroom and then the teachers rotating. I just think it's, it would be intolerable for me, I think, anyway, to sit in one classroom all day long. So we're trying to think about this from a kind of a pod standpoint, and how can we provide some movement? We want to provide certainly mask breaks and time outside for students at the lower level, but we're trying to mitigate some of those things by having the conversation about not necessarily going for a full day, more than a half, but not a regular full day. The afternoon then would become asynchronous likely learning. So students would go attend for the day, they would go home, and they would have some packets of materials that attach to the instruction that they would need to work on. And then for the ones in the hybrid model who do not come back the following day on that rotation, that day would be remote learning, at which point we would provide both synchronous and asynchronous. So there would be a schedule for students, there would be live video conferencing with teachers at the class, and that would be part of that one full day, at which they would be then be remote. So I'm sure I might have missed something, we might have missed something, but that is a big picture overview, and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hackett. Thanks, Jim. Anybody on the subcommittee have any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's Tom Devon.
Have at it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. My only question is, have we thought towards, you know, we're going to have potentially children in buildings, and like anything else, we have children that get sick, and they'll be in one day and out the next. Should we think towards, you know, through our nursing staff, having something that's proactive, that when a child is out, we make a call to the house, we'll figure out a way to get, you know, get in contact with that family and see if it's COVID-related or not? Because if it does, it rings a bell, and there'll be other protocols that would then be triggered. In being proactive, and it's something I'm trying to be more myself, in being proactive, we get to, shall we say, control how it interacts with us. So it's just the only suggestion that I could think on the medical side. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You want to take that, Jim?
Yeah, sure. You know, part of the work of the Health and Safety Working Group is around the protocols that we'll use for any type of illness, whether it's COVID-related or not. And at the same time, the state recently issued some guidance in terms of protocols they would like to see followed. But just to give you a flavor for some of the things that we'd be doing, before parents send their kids to school, we have a checklist of health-related topics we want them to cover at home to ensure that their kid is safe to send to school. There's also protocols in place once a kid goes home sick, in terms of their ability to return, and the steps that we have put in place for them to walk through, so that we ensure by the time they return to school that they're healthy and they're not going to be something, somebody who's going to be contagious in our schools. There's a separate protocol, should a child go home and be tested and be found positive for COVID, and what happens not only to that student, but all the close contacts of that student within the school system. So between the state guidance and the work of the Health and Safety Committee, we will have that proactive set of guidelines in place before school opens, so that we ensure that those who are coming to school are healthy, and that we have a system in place to help those kids who might fall ill during the school day to get home safely. As Frank was talking about space, one of the other areas that we're working on right now, isolation rooms at each site. And Chris McNamara and our Director of Nursing, Jean Alzali, have been going through all the buildings to identify those locations, so that even if an individual student should fall ill, that we have a safe place to hold them, and a parent can come and get them in a process to follow, should that be necessary, not only in having them leave the building, but also at some point to return to the building.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Just a couple of other important ads. We also have, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, there really are two approval bodies or people. One is the school committee. The other is the Town Health and Building Division. So we have been in regular contact with Mary Beth McGrath at Town Hall. She has been in regular contact with our school nurses, as she has since the closure. Our school nurses, as you know, have been providing a tremendous amount of help, just in the overall town management of COVID. So there's, you know, there's been a good relationship formed already, which was excellent, not anticipated, but it just worked out that way. We do have several nurses on the Health and Safety Committee, the Steering Committee for opening, and, you know, this is all about making sure that we can do this in a safe way. So, but, just to say that we're not the ones that really are checking off on the building as to whether or not our plan makes sense from a health and safety standpoint. You know, that check will be done by the Town Health Department, which really acts as an independent body to make sure that we're doing what we need to do, and we clearly want experts helping us make those kinds of decisions. The other thing I want to mention is we are doing, we're contracting for air exchange testing in each one of our classrooms in each one of our schools. So that will begin tomorrow, I believe, as early as tomorrow, I should say. That test will help us understand how the airflow and the air exchange, fresh air exchange, is happening in each one of our classrooms, so that we can provide that data to teachers, the public, to make sure that people know that, you know, that that check has been done, that we may find that there are rooms that don't hit the standard well enough in the environment that we're in, that we just need to take a particular room offline and not use it for a classroom setting. So part of all this too, is we talk about some shifting and trying to create some space. You know, we have to create the space in the buildings for six-foot physical distancing. We also need to make sure that we are set up in a way that we have plenty of, well, have good flex space. I don't want to say plenty, but we can't pack a building to its absolute maximum capacity with six-foot physical distancing. You know, for example, some of the suggestions made by the state were to turn your cafeteria, turn your gymnasium into multiple classrooms. None of what we are planning does any of that for a lot of reasons. One, we think those spaces are important for potentially other things, but we also, programmatically, I should say, we also need to make sure that we have places where kids can go. If we have more kids move in, if we have a teacher who has to go out for just even a regular illness during the middle of the day, you know, we could be in a situation, then maybe we need to set up a temporary classroom in a gymnasium to use for a week or a few days, which would allow us to have more students in that space. If that teacher is covering two classrooms, for example, and have, you know, one person take those two classes for a period of time. So flexibility, choice, you know, that's really what, and safety is really what we're trying to get after. We're building all this around, yes, I just had said the last time we talked about this, but all this, in the center of all this planning equity. You know, we did, I think, an outstanding job in the spring, and not because of me, because our IT department is just great people, of just pumping out technology from Chromebooks to hotspots for families who didn't have internet connection. You know, we really worked hard at that. We've ramped up additional Chromebooks. We have a lot more coming in as part of a COVID grant from the federal government that we got. We also will be receiving, or have received, $222 per student as part of a COVID relief grant that has to be expended by December of 2020. Those expenditures can cover everything, having to do with whatever we need to do to bring students back to school and keep kids safe. So for example, any testing that we do, like air exchange, that can be covered by the grant. And then, as we talked a little bit through St. Francis, that, the lease costs are on a building for additional space can also be covered by the grant. So, I mean, it's awesome because we can, you know, protect our operating budget from those unexpected or one-time kind of expenses. And hopefully, if the news is decent next week about what Chapter 70 funding is going to look like, you know, we can stay whole. So I'm happy, can we get into St. Francis just a little bit?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, including St. Francis, but Carla, did you have anything before I jump in?
I was just going to say something when you were talking about the health and safety, and with that subcommittee, the nurses are aware, you know, the parents, we hope, will follow those guidelines. And there are some kids with chronic conditions that constantly are, their symptoms, but we're going to have to track those. We know we're going to see more children coming to the nurses, because the nurse is more than just a nurse. You go to her for every aspect of health, mental, physical. So they, everyone's aware, and the team's been doing a really good job of planning that, but other than that, no.
Of which Carla's been an important member. As you know, Carla, from the school committee, is one, the school committee representative, with Jen Dolan being the other. So, but it's been great with Carla, because she's been, she's in the health business. She's also a parent, and it's been, it's really, really important for us to have her in that group. So that's been a big help for us.
Well, thank you, Carla.
Getting into St. Francis, I know that's important. You know, Frank was talking a little bit about technology beyond just hardware. The other thing that the district has done over the last few weeks is get some software to make it easier on parents when their kids come home in a remote capacity, that will allow for a single log-on to all the different applications that we, as a school system, and different levels use. So even beyond just Chromebooks and hotspots, you know, we've found ways to make that work at home easier on parents, easier for kids, because we know that we're probably going to need some level of that as the year progresses.
Thank you, thank you, Jim. So I have a few questions, and St. Francis is one of them, but one question I have is our bus utilization. So today, I know every bus that we operate isn't full. So have we looked at kind of the capacity that we, the utilization today on some routes, and how we, I know there's some areas that the buses are a lot more full than others. Is that part of the planning process?
It's actually, it is from the perspective of we are going to need to have an idea what the capacity will be this year. We're definitely going to have ridership drop-off. One of the things we've talked about just conceptually is requiring parents to sign up for transportation like we do every year, but give a couple opportunities for that signup. So in August, we say you got to sign up for the bus if you're planning to get to have your child. we say you got to sign up for the bus if you're planning to get to have your child ride, ride to school, obviously wants the plan is clear about what it looks like. And then go back out maybe in November or so, if we're, you know, if we're still in this situation, either way, whether we, whether we're getting closer to being able to come back full-time because things have changed medically, or whether we're in full remote because we're into a shutdown. But to give parents an opportunity a couple times over the course of the school year to rejoin the Transportation Department. I think a lot of this is, as we know, it's the unknown, right? We don't know, none of us really know visually what this is going to look like and we won't know until we get into it. So what we're essentially doing, Mr. Corrises, depending on the plan we land on and where kids are, we're rebuilding the transportation routing completely.
Right, right. And it, it has a lot to do with what kind of a plan we move forward with as well, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. Okay. So there's some flexibility and I guess, you know, obviously what we need to understand is that the cost we budget, you know, for this year, are we going to be able to live within that? Or does this cause us to have extra expense because of the utilization?
Right. And if it does, again, the, the grant that we've received for COVID relief would be, that would be an eligible cost if we have to put more bus, more routes in or double routes. I mean, the buses we have are the buses we have. We have about forty, seventy-two or seventy-four passenger buses. And again, you know, we're going to probably be maxing out each run at about twenty-five kids. So, but those expenses would be eligible for, to use against the grant funding.
Okay, thank you. And then, and I know we've got a lot of guidance thrown at us in the last couple of days. I tried to read as much of it as I could. There's a lot of discussion about sort of opening up the building to outside air and also utilizing out the outdoors, right? And I don't know where we've landed on any of that, but, you know, I can see that we have some challenges, like, you know, you certainly can't do that in the inner classrooms at the high school.
Right.
So, so what do we, you know, what are we thinking about those things? And I, you know, I generally have a concern with the outdoor part of it from a safety standpoint. So I just wonder, you know, what we've thought about from that standpoint?
So we have already purchased some canopies that we would be able to set up at, at various schools, the high school in particular. We can purchase some more. They are very expensive to rent because obviously, you know, this is an opportunity for people apparently who rent tents and canopies to make more money, which I get. So who would have thought that would have been the business to be in? But we are exploring those options to provide opportunities for, for programming that is flexible to be outside or kind of rotate outdoor classrooms on kind of a signup or schedule basis. We obviously, you know, it's going to be weather dependent and we can't make it part of a plan that we have to rely on when we get into the middle of December, right? So
Right.
We are looking just to see, you know, how we can best utilize those, whether it's for mask breaks or whatever. Getting kids outside obviously is important. The interior classrooms of the high school is one of the major reasons why we're doing the air exchange testing. And it could come back. They don't have exterior, they're not exterior walls so they don't have windows. We already want to limit the use of those as much as possible, but the reality is there's a lot of them. So
Right, right.
First do the air exchange testing, but we need to try to figure out a way so that one group of kids isn't sitting in an interior classroom the entire school day. We've got, we have to do some rotation. Understanding that there is some risk with that. I mean, you know, but as long as we know where kids are all the time, for example, the buses, the seats will have to be assigned so that if something happens and someone gets sick, we know who, who they were in and around. You know, when they're in the building, we need to know where they are. We, we have to figure the bathroom situation out, which is, you know, is a little complicated, but we just need to make sure that we do the best we can and then communicate clearly how we're going to handle it. So, yeah, so that's, trying to make sure we get ways to get kids outside is important to us. We've already purchased a few canopies and we are looking to purchase a few more. We actually sat down with the floor plans the other day just to see, are there some optimal places in each one of our buildings where we could place some?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. And again, I think I like the idea of getting kids outside. You know, I certainly employed it even, you know, at the college level in September when it was nice outside and it's, it's a nice learning environment. I think the only concern I have and I want us to think about is, is the security. You know, obviously when we have kids in a building, we can have kids and teachers secure.
Right. So that's, it's a great consideration on top of the fact that we can't lose sight of the fact that our normal safety and security protocols still have to apply. So we had to think about how do we do a stay-in-place drill, lockdown
Students outside.
You know, when in fact, we've got kids who can't be closer than six feet together. So we're going to, we have to modify some of how we practice our safety and security protocols. We still need to run fire drills. We still need to do all those things that we've always done. So, you know, that's, that's a big part of it. And, and we've already done some drilling and working on, for example, we do lockdown drills and security drills when we have a scenario where students are at recess. So, you know, we have some experience with if kids are outside, not kind of in a normal setting. We've done them when kids are in lunch or passing in the hallways. So we, we have worked hard to not just do the standard, you know, you are on a bell schedule and it's so convenient that everyone's in a classroom that you can lock down. We've got to mix it up, so.
Good, good. That's good. And then, you know, you mentioned the ventilation testing. So, you know, I did sit in on a webinar where there were superintendents and experts from kind of around the US that talked about a lot of things that I saw in the guidance. And ventilation was certainly a very hot topic because, you know, many school buildings don't have the best ventilation systems, you know, in the world. So I'm glad to hear that we're going to do some testing. And then, what's the plan if we, if we find that we have issues? Like, how do, how are we going to mitigate that?
Well, I mean, we first have to define what the, what the issue is and the scope of the problem is going to be. You know, so if, if, for example, you know, if it's, it really comes down to how many classrooms are we talking about that we would need to bring offline? So we're hoping it's not a lot, but if it is, then maybe we do have to look, for example, at the high school because that's where, you know, the majority of the interior classrooms are. Maybe we then have to look at setting out classroom spaces in other larger areas like a gymnasium or wrestling room or gymnasium foyer or cafeteria, which is why we really want to start this planning, not using those spaces at all, knowing that we can provide a program without having used those spaces, but those spaces then become available to us if, if needed for whatever reason might come up. Also, just to mention, you know, the library and media center hold an awful lot of kids at six feet apart with windows and good, in good ventilation, air exchange. So that's the approach we're taking. You know, any point in time during the year, we might have to bring a classroom offline. Or, you know, we have twenty-five kids who go out with three teachers. I mean, it's, it's going to be, there's going to be a lot of audible calls at, at the line of scrimmage. I mean, we, we think we're going to run and then all of a sudden we're going to pass because things are going to change, not just daily, but potentially, you know, minute by minute, hour by hour. And we just need to be nimble enough to be able to, to adjust to that and what the conditions are.
Right. And this may be a question for Ed, but, I mean, have they, they given protocols or standards that we need to meet as far as air exchange? Because, you know, I think about those interior classrooms and, you know, it's like being locked on an airplane, right? The, the air is probably not moving as freely. So are they giving us any guidance on that?
The ESCO project has certainly helped because all of our air exchanges, you know, they're in working condition. Everything was looked at and, and all the buildings, except the two middle schools, including all those interior classrooms. We just want to make sure by doing the testing on those interior rooms, that the air is turning over in those rooms often enough per hour. And then we can look towards not the codes when the school was built, but the standards that either the CDC or the Town Health Department feels is necessary now, especially for the lower number of people that will be in those rooms.
Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Thank you, Ed. You know, I, I know there's just so many unknowns about how the, the virus is transmitted. So it's hard to tell if it, you know, can be airborne like that and all that. So the ventilation does become an important factor in, in what we look at.
And we're also hoping that with the additional disinfecting that we're doing on the high-touch areas on the buses, that perhaps we can also reduce instances, instances of common cold and flu. So we don't have a lot of those symptoms competing with the coronavirus that we're looking for.
Perfect. Thank you, Ed. Just a couple of other things. Right, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, Tom Devon.
Go ahead, Mr. Devon.
I think one of the more important things that we're getting, and we know that every single year, you know, and I've been on the committee for about eight years, and I thought the thing that was really astounding to me was that, you know, the unknowns when we go into a new year, what we can, and, and, you know, I always said that, you know, we, we think that we have a, a full, shall we say, mathematical problem with all the knowns, but we don't. We don't know what we, what we can expect from, from the state. We don't even know how many children we're going to educate each and every year. So what we've done, and I think the, the good doctor touched on it, is our ability to audible. The fact that we are not going to use certain, you know, great spaces like the gym and like the media center, allowing for potential problems. The fact that we are looking at St. Francis to give us more space. I think as we give ourselves more audibles or more, more potential, potentials to change, we, with, again, being proactive. Now, when they start doing these HVAC tests, what they do is they take the cubic feet inside the room. It's a mathematical problem, and they'll go through how many exchanges. I do believe if you start looking towards the inside rooms, because they're configured differently, and the HVAC systems are configured differently with different sizing of ducts and whatnot, we're going to see differences within those rooms. It's not just going to be a standard, I believe. So I believe by doing these tests, we're going to be able to, shall we say, ask like certain rooms that are not conducive to having that many kids in it. And if we have the swing, and it might be swing space, if you'd like, call the gym and places like that, we will have other places in which to put students. So, you know, situation normal. We're going to have to, you know, perhaps change the play at the, at the line of scrimmage. I want to touch on the buses. I think some of the parents may be more comfortable dropping their kids off at school. So we don't even know what ridership is going to be. I do believe that, you know, we'll be able to morph from what we need based on what we see in the first few weeks. So we're allowing for any and all things, but our ability to change on the fly, I think, is one of our strengths. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Devon. So just a couple of other things.
George, you still with us?
Okay. There seems to be some, some good, some good documentation that that model might help us actually work through the challenge of, you know, having to close a school because there's an infection and things like that. So I don't know if you can expand a little bit on what your thoughts are around the cohort model?
Or are you speaking to me? You asking that question?
Yeah, I'm Dr. Hackett, yeah.
Actually, I'll have Jim speak to that a little bit because it's kind of tying in, obviously, with how we schedule kids and how we run program.
Right. So along with what you said, George, we felt the same way even prior to the guidance in looking at almost every single level, with the exception of the high school, we would be looking to cohort students and have them move, you know, Frank used the term pods, something similar to that, to have at least the same kids kind of with one another, even if they're moving, so that they're interacting with the same kids and, you know, restricting the ability of a virus to spread in that capacity. Again, not to belabor it, but the, the trickier part is the high school where schedules can be varied and kids take a variety of different classes. And to ensure that we don't disadvantage them in the college process, we'd be more hesitant to cohort them as a group. But we are looking at ways to minimize travel, minimize their interactions with groups that they aren't going to be in the same classes with. You know, part of the, the whole conversation around lunches and options around that relate to trying to reduce those interactions as much as possible.
Thank you. That's great. You know, I, I like the fact that we're looking at ways to make sure that kids move a little bit and don't, you know, aren't in one space for eight hours a day with, you know, with a mask on. I think, you know, they're going to need to have some, some mobility. So I appreciate that you're looking at that. And then, Dr. Hackett, I know you said you were going to expand a little bit on St. Francis. I guess the only question I have there before you, before you go into it, I can't, I haven't been in that space in a long time. I can't visualize it. Is there anything you can bring to us kind of preliminarily to show your thoughts on how you would utilize that space?
Yes, absolutely. At minimum, you know, we obviously have the floor plans. We need to do the same air exchange testing at St. Francis if we're going to use that space. The actual building itself is not accessible. It has, it does have stairs and there's no, you go into the door and you're either going up a set of stairs or down a set of stairs. So we would need to be really thoughtful about how we program it. We would obviously need to get approval from the, from the Town of Braintree Building Division, Health Division. But we believe it's still worth pursuing, you know, and we can accommodate for, as long as we can accommodate for someone who wants to have a meeting with a teacher or administrator, you know, that we have acceptable space for them. We actually, they actually do, and the rectory that's next door to St. Francis is actually kind of a condo unit space, but there's a, a accessible conference room that they, that they use quite a bit. Now, that building has an elevator in it. So we've been, you know, we had that conversation. That definitely can be part of our, part of our plan and, you know, kind of schedule the use of that space when needed. So that's one limitation of it. There are fourteen classrooms. You know, we believe at six-foot distancing right now, just rough numbers, that we can get about two hundred students in there. We need to first land on kind of what is our plan? What would we use it for? There's potential that we might need to do full-day kindergarten sessions there because we want to pull the kindergarten, you know, before they came, we want to make sure that we are providing that program and that that program needs to look different than a half-day program. And that might be the, one of the better uses of that, but also even potentially use that space for half-day. So that's, that's part of our initial current thinking, but that is really initial current thinking. So the first decision we have to make is, is, you know, as a school committee, you have to make, it kind of endorses us to move in the direction of at least one of the options, if not asking us to go in the direction of a couple of options. So it will depend on where we land with that as to exactly how we'd use that space and what classrooms we'd utilize and what rooms we wouldn't and that kind of thing. So. So, is that, I don't know, we're losing everyone. So, of course, losing your audio, but I'll just, just continue quickly. So we are, we've had the initial walkthrough. We have an, you know, somewhat of an idea of what the leasing costs would be. And again, that leasing cost would be, would be eligible to use the grant funds for that. We think it's worth it for space for two hundred students. We are, you know, not in really in a full negotiation yet because we need to work with the Town Building Division and Health Department to make sure that before we get into a, you know, kind of a real discussion about the lease costs, that we would be okay to use that building from a health and safety perspective. But that, that work will be ongoing and hopefully done next week so that we can, you know, we can count, either count on using the space or know that we can't, that's not going to be an option for us. So we will set that up next week. We will have them walk through the Town, Town Health and Building Department will do a walkthrough with us. We'll need to do the exchange testing. walkthrough with us, we'll need to do the exchange testing at some point, and then we will sit down and work through a contract for one-year lease for the building. Utility costs are about $40,000 for a year, so we will need to factor that into the grant costs as well. And obviously, depending on how we use it, we're gonna need to figure out the transportation component of it as well. So, that's kind of where we are with it. I guess really, more than anything, conceptually, we want you to know that. If there are any real objections from you as a committee, and then as a subcommittee, and then we'll talk about the school committee on Monday night, then, you know, we want to know that now before we go too much farther down the road.
No, I think it's great. I think, you know, given that we're starting to back up to, you know, not a lot of time between now and the opening of school, we would just want to know as much detail as we can, because it's gonna be difficult to obviously make that decision unless we have as much detail as we can get.
And I think the biggest component of it is whether it's usable, you know, whether it would pass the town guidelines for what that space needs to do from a health and safety perspective. Because in any plan that we talk about, we really very much could use, in fact, in some of the planning, we really need additional spaces. So, we did talk a little bit about Foster, which, as you know, has been offline for several years and was being used by an adult program, special needs program. That program has left that building, that's a possibility, but that building is, would need some significant work in short order to really make us feel comfortable with reoccupying it with students. So, that is one possibility for some additional space. We've talked a little bit about a couple of other places possibly, but we don't think anything is close enough and close enough being ready to really move forward on.
What about 90 Pond?
That has accessibility issues, it would just depend on what we'd be talking about using it for.
Yeah, I think the thing about that and Foster is not actually the buildings, but there is certainly a lot of land available around both of those.
Right, right.
So, okay, that makes sense. All right, any other questions for Dr. Hackett?
Just one more thing I want to touch on, but I want to make sure that everyone, I don't, anyone else in the subcommittee has any questions? Specifically Carla.
Oh, thanks, that would have been great. No, no, I think being able to use that school would be a great option, so...
Okay. The only final thing I want to mention, and we need to, we're gonna talk to the Policy and Education Subcommittee about this after your meeting, is the school calendar. So, you know, there are a couple of different scenarios, right? So, let's just say, for example, there is a peak in the virus, and either we or the governor feels that we have to go full remote and can't return in any way, shape, or form, we would have a calendar for that. That calendar, I think, would look a lot like the one we currently have in place for next year, which is a, you know, an earlier start, early September. You know, the other option or the other scenario is if we are in some kind of hybrid model or a model that is both hybrid and full everyday return for certain grade levels, then, you know, we would have a different calendar. And how we've been, how we have been thinking about that is clearly we have a lot of training to do, both from, with all of our staff, just both on safety and health protocols for COVID, you know, we have that piece. We also, as Mr. Lee mentioned earlier, we have purchased quite a few software systems for, that we don't want to just save for if we are in full remote, we want them to be, and we're very selective in choosing software packages that we could use if we were even, if we were dealing with none of this and our kids went to school full-time, so that, you know, we can create a sustainable learning platform from a technology standpoint, that once we teach kids and parents and staff how to use it, it can become part of what we do all the time. So, we definitely need some front-end training, and we would want to take advantage of the change from 180 student days to the 175, and then look at some other possible days from a professional development scenario that we could maybe even add to more than that. So, at earliest, we have been talking internally about maybe starting with students on September 14th. The week prior to that is the Labor Day weekend week, so that's a four-day week. We have been kicking around that idea in conversations with particularly Mr. Devon. You know, we then started kind of talking about what if we looked at the following, which is Monday, September 21st. I think that we're kind of leaning toward that internally, because we think that that's a, it gives us time to both do some additional piloting of what we're trying to do. For example, we might actually do some bus runs with, and actually bring some kids who are voluntarily ready and parent approval to come in and run through, you know, kind of what do they look like in a classroom with masks on, you know, and how do we move within a building, how did the bus run go? That additional time is, allows us to kind of, I don't want to necessarily call it a soft opening like a restaurant, but it is kind of that idea. I think that would really be helpful for, not only for us, but I think for parents and students as well. So, you know, the idea of going to the 21st makes sense for that reason, as well as it, you know, it gives three more weeks essentially for us to see how everyone else is doing and see if we can learn some additional lessons from school communities who started earlier than that. But it also gives us more time to kind of see how the virus is trending. As we've mentioned early by Carla, you know, we have families who now, and I get it, but, you know, they're going to out-of-state tournaments for various sports. We've had some reported cases that have come back from students who have traveled that way, or families who have traveled that way. You know, now that we're into the summer planning, summer programming kind of being more open, I do think we're just gonna see a little bit more, a little bit more in terms of infection rates. So I don't think it's necessarily gonna keep us from opening, but it would be good to have some more time just to see how that's trending. So, we are looking to bring to the school committee Monday night a couple of different options for a calendar, not for, necessarily for approval that night, but it's important for us to get that in front of you and get that out to the public, get some feedback as well, and then, you know, we need to kind of nail the school calendar down. The other component of that is we're gonna be recommending that we do a half-year calendar, so that we do the calendar from September to December 31st, because anything can happen. We could be back to full-time, we could be full-remote, we may have made, needed to make some adjustments during the fall semesters for certain days for certain reasons, and again, just going back to that whole flexibility thing, you know, we may need to think from January to June differently about how many days we need to get in, and we may think differently about February and April vacation, we may be in flu season. There's all kinds of reasons why. I think, you know, it makes sense for us to start with, you know, the first part of the calendar and then give ourselves some time and flexibility to see how things go for the second half of the year. We might have lost you, Mr. Kors.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I had a little blip there. Thank you, doctor. Yeah, I think as we all know, the most important thing on our agenda for the next five weeks is making sure that we come up with a plan and open schools safely. So, I do appreciate the updates.
Absolutely. And any, obviously, you guys know where we are, you know, any feedback along the way, something, an idea to come up with. I mean, there's no shortage of, you know, we want to make sure that we're getting as much important feedback as we can. We've been really cautious about going out with too much information until we know when we go out that what we're talking about is actually physically doable. You know, we don't want to float scenarios that we don't think we can do, and then people get stuck on a particular idea that they really like or really don't like. You know, when we go out with the options, we will hope, we will know to the best of our ability that what we're saying can and will work.
Okay, that sounds great. So, the next thing on the agenda is, is it next steps and meeting date?
Yeah, I think that'd be the best place to go. I'd just briefly say on FY20 closeout, we are really close to completely wrapping up. We had some additional, I'm sorry, payroll stuff that we had to clear the system with, some outstanding POs. So we are pretty close to a final FY20 closeout. And FY21 is, you know, thankfully, it was really good to hear what you said, Mr. Kors, about the fact that Senator Tilti had, you had a conversation with him that we're gonna have some information about what state funding looks like by next week, because that, we just, we just can't really know what we're gonna do until we know what the funding's gonna be. I really hope that it's not gonna be a month-to-month budget. I hope that they are gonna lock funding in for the entire fiscal year, because the month-to-month planning is next to impossible. So, we could talk more about that at another meeting. I'm kind of thinking next week, you know, if we could, we generally do our subcommittee meetings on Thursday, so I don't know if we could just stay same time, same channel on July 30th, next Thursday, if that works for everyone.
Yeah, I'm hoping that we'll have some...
Thank you for graduation. Sorry, sorry. Devon quickly reminded me, that is high school graduation night, so we probably have to leave that open.
Yeah, why don't we...
On the alumni field, we could set up one of our new canopies and do it. So how about Wednesday, the 22nd?
Good for me.
Good for me.
That's good for me.
Perfect, all right. Except that today's the 22nd, I meant the 29th.
Yeah, what you said.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, that's good, and hopefully we'll have some update on chapter 70 and everything, but...
That'd be excellent.
Maybe I'm being optimistic.
Something's gonna go away sometime.
Okay, and I think that's all we have on the agenda. I do see that we have one attendee that I see a hand up, Dr. Hackett. So we typically don't have public comment, but certainly I would open it up if we have someone that would like to make a comment.
Okay, I will do that.
Oh, okay. Welcome.
Welcome, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. So I just had a few questions from Hackett. I see that you guys are giving the masks, but are you, how are you guys gonna be distributing the masks? Is it gonna be at school, or are kids gonna have a certain amount every week? How is that gonna work?
So, we haven't nailed down the details of that yet. The health and safety working team are having those discussions. The, you know, the initial thought or idea would be, we know we're gonna have a population of parents who are gonna want to provide their child with their own masks, they may have reusable, washable masks that they want to, you know, manage that way. As I said, we have 30,000 right now to start the year. Our plan would be to use those with any student who doesn't have it, who leaves it on the bus, who leaves it, you know, who loses it during the day, to be able to have a mask available for students in that situation.
Okay, good, good, that sounds good. So what about the Chromebooks and to see if they have Wi-Fi and all that? I see that you said you guys have a few. Are we reaching out to these families to make sure that they have all the tools they need for the kids to be successful?
The good news is we have really good information on that right now, because of the way last year with the closure, so we'll need to update all that. And then we will be, have to spend some time prior to school, having students and families both return for either an upgrade or to repair Chromebooks they have, update the operating systems potentially, depending on what they have for a Chromebook, and additionally, making sure that we provide any kind of training that we, that the students might need, that, you know, so that late start that we talked about, the possibility of that, will also help us to take care of that, those issues.
Okay, now regarding the transportation, you said that you guys will be doing transportation within two miles. Skyline Apartments where I live is about 1.1 mile from East Middle School. I have a sixth grader, I'm a single parent. So if I can't have any other transportation for my daughter, what other options will we have?
So, to answer that question with just kind of a vague comment, that we don't know right now what it looks like in our worst-case scenario. So when I mentioned transporting pre-K six as required by law, and with 25 students on a bus, right now, we're looking at the scenario where we would not transport any student less than two miles, so that we can know our absolute worst-case scenario, so that then we can look at start times at school, and then we can look at expanding routes, and we can get information from parents on who's going to ride. So, that work will continue absolutely through August, and, you know, it could be into a little bit of September, just in terms of really trying to maximize our ability to transport students. So, we might have to expand the use of our group stops. I mean, there are all kinds of different things that we can look at, but until we know our worst-case scenario, it's hard to plan for how we can do more than that.
Okay, because I also like to plan for worst-case scenario. So it, to me, as a single mother in July, I like to think about what am I gonna do in the worst case? So I always plan in advance for those kind of things.
Yep.
But the next thing is the lunch. So is that still gonna be going on if some students are working, are studying from home? Are we still gonna have that option for lunches? So that they can...
We haven't talked about that specifically, but we do know our capability of butting, grabbing-go lunches, so, but we don't know at this point how many students are planning to stay home with either an option to stay home if they need to, or if we went full remote, obviously, we would clearly do that. But certainly that would be the effort to do it. We want to make sure that families and students are getting fed, you know, every day, so...
Okay, and that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Mauricio, and thank you, Dr. Hackett. Appreciate it. I think, you know, just a comment, you know, obviously, a lot of this is still a work in progress, so hopefully, and we appreciate the feedback, we'll hopefully take that into account as we work through this, so...
Sounds good.
Thank you again. Okay, any, anything else before we entertain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn if you need it.
Do I have a second?
Second, sorry, my daughter was talking to me.
That's okay. Okay, Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Mr. Devon?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Bye, everybody.